Are there any additions to the agenda? None for council to adopt the agenda. That, all in favor? This is carried. Moving on, three point zero, are there any corrections or amendments to the January nineteen regular meeting of council minutes, January nineteen, twenty twenty-two public hearing minutes, opportunity treatment and recovery center rezoning by law twenty twenty-one, ten D? Can I get a member of council to adopt the January nineteen, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council minutes, the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two public hearing minutes, opportunity home treatment and recovery center rezoning by law twenty twenty-one, ten D? Like a manna? Thank you for that, all in favor? That is carried and we will move on to our first proclamation is five point one. Laptop, so please just bear with me. So five point one, our proclamation is twenty twenty-two Black History Month, February twenty twenty-two, whereas Black History Month reminds us of the struggles of African Canadians for fair treatment and equal opportunity. It is a time to reflect on the history and experience of escaped slaves and of the freedom found for over thirty thousand slaves throughout the Underground Railroad. And whereas African Canadians have made significant contribution to Canada's diversity, culture, economy, literature, sports and politics, many renowned African Canadians have held prominent positions in public office. And whereas Black History Month is an important reminder of the struggles and achievements of African Canadians and their role in Canada's history, the town of Drayton Valley acknowledges these contributions and reaffirms its ongoing commitment to building awareness and an inclusive society. Therefore, I, Nassy Dawes, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month, dated at the Town of Drayton Valley in the province of Alberta, this ninth day of February twenty twenty-two. So just in addition to the proclamation, I think that it's important to remind everybody that this is a time to be celebrating, to be listening to the stories and experiences and learning about the history of of Black History Month. I think that it's not just about a month, it's something that we should be doing every day when it comes to being inclusive and diverse. And we did offer an invitation to Mr. Allen Godard, or Godard, I apologize if I'm saying it wrong, from the Breton Museum to come and share some stories and in some of the history with us, but he hasn't got back to us, so hopefully we'll be seeing him come to council or come give us a visit this month. And we can listen to a little bit of the history that surrounds us and the Breton area and celebrate in some of the traditions and history with him as well. So with that, I will also move on to six point one, public hearing variance request at fifty-eight oh nine, fiftieth avenue, lot five, block thirty-four, plan eight eight two one, two eight, development permit application, DV twenty-one dash zero six six. So February ninth, twenty twenty-two, at nine oh seven AM, I will declare the non-statutory public hearing open for development permit application DV twenty-one dash zero six six. Those that are present for the public hearing are myself, administration, council and members of the community. The purpose of the non-statutory public hearing today is to receive comments, concerns and questions from the public with regard to a proposed sign variance application at fifty-eight oh nine, fiftieth avenue, lot five, block thirty-four, plan eight eight two, one, two, eight, nine, to locate a freestanding sign on a commercial property. Administration received a development permit application for a freestanding sign with a variance request at fifty-eight oh nine, fiftieth avenue. The proposed freestanding sign is to be installed at the northeast corner of the subject property adjacent to fiftieth avenue. In accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley land use by law twenty twenty twelve D, the maximum sign area for freestanding signs in non-residential districts is seven point two meters squared. The applicant is proposing a sign with an area of seventeen point five meters squared with a variance of two hundred and fifty percent. The proposed sign meets all other land use requirements and is settled in the town's land use by law. The subject parcel is located within the CGEN Commercial General District of Land Use Bylaw twenty twenty twelve D where freestanding signs are permitted. The property is home to a new Wendy's restaurant and a drive-through that were approved and currently under construction. Notification of the by law requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided through in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley by law twenty eighteen, zero seven, eight, electronic advertising by law. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. So I will call for any comments from administration? No comments, are there any written submissions that were received?
Your worship, there are no written submissions received.
Perfect, thank you for that. And are there any comments from anyone online? Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed at nine oh nine AM. That is a lot of reading, wow. So we'll jump right into our delegation, seven point one, Drayton Valley RCMP Community Letter Quarter Community Policing Report and Stats. Staff Sergeant Erin Matthews, good morning, welcome, thank you for joining us. Wonderful, how are you?
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, well, that's good. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's having a wonderful day. It's great that we have such a wonderful weather. At least it keeps us all in check anyways. Yeah, exactly. So we didn't get any, we haven't received our actual stats yet, but I did provide you with a copy of the quarterly municipal policing report. Basically, the community consultations, it just shows the different types of meetings that I attended over the last quarter, which runs from October first until December thirty-first. With regards to the community priorities, which were established through a online survey last year, and I think we were supposed to do one this year, but I haven't heard anything about what happened there, so I'm gonna have to do some digging on that. But I know I had received some information in December about the online survey going out, but I haven't, I haven't seen anything myself, so. However, with regards to the crime prevention police, police community relations, as you know, I've spent a significant part of time heading to different meetings, council meetings, the PAC team meetings, homelessness and poverty meetings, also the community school resource committee. And I'm planning, I did happen, was able to get into town hall meetings in the county, and my hope is that I can look forward to, especially with then some of the restrictions being lifted here, into having a town hall meeting for the Town of Drayton Valley sometime in, in hopefully March, maybe April, but shortly anyways. We have, we continue to do our prolific offender checks, and in the past quarter, we did stop here and go there. So they are, it all is part and parcel. With those warrants, we just, we seized over seven hundred thousand dollars of stolen property, which was excellent. And yeah, right now, with regards to our staffing, we currently have one member that is off on leave without pay. We have one of our corporals just recently got promoted to the position of sergeant in Grand Prairie, so that position is going to be looking to be filled. The sergeant position actually closes today, it has been posted, so hopefully we hear something within the next couple of months with regards to that. We did have one new member that started on Sunday, straight from depot, and he's really gung ho and super. We've got another one that's starting, I believe, February twenty-fourth. And then we have another one that it will probably, we haven't received any notification yet, but will likely come in in March. And that is to replace, we have two members, one that's going to Grand Prairie, another one that's going to Grand Prairie as a constable, and another one that's going to our explosives disposal unit and out of Regina, I mean, out of Edmonton. And of course, the CSRO position. The Constable Renaud took over as the CSRO as of February first. He's very excited and quite happy to be in that position, but we are going to be, we have to have another person to fill that position. So it's just a domino effect, it seems. But yeah. So we, when it comes down to the statistics that were presented, those are really for the last quarter, so again, from October until December thirty-first. And they are much different from what I presented last month. I mean, we have a huge increase in thefts of motor vehicles, which have been happening. We are currently, we keep getting them, but they keep getting released, which is another meeting that I'm on because we're trying to come up with some appropriate solutions to the issues with the judicial system right now, so. Again, the misdeeds are up because we've changed our scoring to mental health calls are still on the rise in the last quarter, we this quarter, so.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, Council Ballas?
In regards to the transfers and the cadets that are coming in, we've had previous cadets and they have to be with somebody for, I believe, six months, if I recall.
Yes.
So the ones that came in prior, are they all past that six month probationary period?
We have, three of them are, so three of them are off of the six months. We have two of them right now that are still on, one will be coming off in a couple of weeks, and the other one gets off at the beginning of March. And then the new ones have six more months.
Yeah, so there will be three that will be coming. So that sort of affects our ability to have more cars out there.
It does. One of the other issues that affects our ability to have more cars is the fact that they're always in the shop, but.
Are they GMs?
What can I say about?
It seems that, and I'm not sure if Drayton Valley is the only detachment that seems to get rookies or cadets, but I'm sure most of them do, but we seem to get an abundance amount of them.
Yes, we do. And things are picking up with regards to people looking to come in to Drayton Valley. I mean, for instance, sergeant position, I've, I've had, been approached by five different individuals who are interested, who are interested in applying for the sergeant's job. So for Drayton Valley, the perception that used to be around for Drayton Valley obviously is changing, which is a good thing. And as I've said before, it's easy to want a so-called experienced member to come in, but sometimes you have to be careful what you wish for, whereas individuals that are coming straight out of depot are keen, they're gung ho, and they're excited to actually put the boots on the ground and actually do some good work, so.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, the only concern would be the numbers, if they could have been more. But I'm glad you answered that question, because that was my next question was, why are we not getting the experienced people? But it's the perception of.
It was, it is the perception, the previous perception, I mean, let's face it, back in, I mean, it extends way back to like twenty fourteen, when, you know, we had the Hells Angels in here. Am telling their troop mates or whomever about the great place Drayton Valley is, so.
So from a talent perspective, is there anything that we could do to alleviate that concern?
Unfortunately, I don't think so. I think that word of mouth is the best way to do it, and I know I pray Drayton Valley anytime I get the opportunity, because I think this is a great community to live in, and I love living here. So I just want all the other officers, and they do, they all feel the same way, so they are really enjoying their time here, and we have a couple that have just bought houses, some more that have bought houses, so they're putting down roots, which is excellent, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is definitely fantastic here, and I'm glad that the perception is changing as well, so I think it's promising for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions, Council Amanda?
Thank you, just unmute. Yeah, it's great to hear. I was, when you mentioned a staff sergeant about auto thefts and all that, was speaking to a police officer from Edmonton, and it seems that the theft of catalytic converters is a big thing there. Is that happening around our neighborhood as well, or it's just?
We've had a few instances, but not, certainly not like Edmonton, and it's not, they like to steal the whole vehicle rather than the catalytic converters here, unfortunately.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's a good thing or not, but yeah, it's, our issue tends to be more with the thefts of actual vehicles as opposed to specifically the catalytic converters.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I suggested a question too, when you mentioned advocating for the judicial system, is there a way that we can help, would you like a letter or anything, I think that we can be, I guess, a chance, we have perhaps the Alberta Municipal Leaders Caucus happening here in March, so maybe we can be, you know, try to set up an appointment and pushing on our end as well, and if you want.
That would be, that would be wonderful, yeah, and I can send you some, some key points with regards to what I know I'm doing. I've met with the MLA and we're going to be meeting with the Justice Minister's Office, Minister Representatives here coming up, so we're hoping to at least get some consistency in it, rather than it being all over the place. And that's really the goal, is, is let's be consistent in how we are applying the you know, bail issues.
Yeah.
So if somebody deserves to be kept in jail, they should. For instance, yes, we may, you're on a regular, you know, patrol, it's our unit, it's supposed to be, it doesn't, they have a license plate on it, stop the vehicle. Well, there's another shotgun, they had brass knuckles, tasers, everything. So thank goodness, the justice saw that they should be remanded, given the seriousness of what we had, but yeah, it's not always the way.
Yeah, and have you seen any improvement, or is it the same?
It's still the same, you know, really, it's, it's a roll of the dice, basically, as to whether or not, you know, they get remanded or whether or not they get let out, so. There are major issues, and of course, it's not just Drayton Valley that's dealing with this, it's all of Alberta, and anything that I can do in order to try and get some consistency is, you know, I figure good, so.
Perfect, yes, if you can send us the information, we'll put something together and we'll help advocate with you for sure.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming today.
You guys have a wonderful day.
You too have a wonderful day and enjoy the warm temperature. Take care. Moving on to seven point two, Family Day Event Fire and Ice at Eagle Point Blue Rapids Parks Council. Good morning, Sandra. Thank you for coming. Down here, yeah, we're having a bit of technical difficulty, so it's a bit confusing, we have to use our laptops as our speakers today.
So I turned the mic on, so they should hear you.
Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody, it's, it's really a pleasure for me to be here again to talk about the Fire and Ice Festival. This is our fourth year that we've partnered with the Town of Drayton Valley on the festival, and we are really happy that this year we can go back to a more live, in-person, outdoor event, so we're super, super stoked about that. And just to say thank you again to the town for partnering with us on this event. So next slide, thank you. So if you'll recall, in twenty twenty is the last year that we had the in-person event that just happens in the downtown park area here across from the civic center. You guys have kindly allowed for the road closure this year again, so we will be able to expand a little bit more to the west as well, with ease for, for people that are walking around the festival area. And then we'll also be using the parking lot to the east of the provincial building, that downtown parking lot, we'll be having a little choo-choo train. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we provided a more self-directed activity for folks. We had three scavenger hunts going on in the community for a number of days, kind of three different levels of intensity and for all, all abilities, which was something we were really keen on providing. We had folks be able to do an activity in Discovery Park and the Lions Park area, and then as well as the Rotary Pembina North South Trails, which are located by the cemetery. So three different venues, we had prizes, and we had very good community participation. People seemed to, to really glom onto that activity, so it was great fun. Next slide, so this coming year, we've decided to do the best of both worlds. We're still going to offer a scavenger hunt out in the Pembina North, or sorry, the Rotary Pembina South Trail system, and that event will run from February eleventh to twenty-second, so people have an opportunity to go do the scavenger hunt there. Again, we have a prize associated with that, and we thought it's, you know, some people just may not feel comfortable yet engaging into, into a in-person event, so this will still allow them to do something fun, perhaps with their family or cohort, or just even as an individual or a couple, and get some exercise and get out into our parks areas, which are beautiful and, and just really great healing places, I have to say. To start at two in the afternoon and then run till eight PM. Just hopefully we can spread the crowd out a little bit more over that time period. So we're, we're looking, as I said, to have kind of best of both worlds. So we've got a number of activities planned. We have Indigo Circus, the fire artists and entertainers coming back, you'll recall, we had a lovely Snow Queen this year. We've added a stilt walkover, as long as it's not super icy, he's gonna be out and about on some super long stilts. We'll have our Snow Princesses back, and then of course, the fire artists. Little Toot, the trackless choo-choo is coming back, which seems to be a big hit. We have folks making maple syrup lollipops, which is fun. We are going to have a food service, I was on the fence about this until recently, but we will have a food service in that Rotary has come on board to pay for hamburgers that we'll provide for free to the community, so that's a huge thing. And then Hayduck Picker Services has supplied us with a large barbecue, so we will use that to help get our food ready, and we'll have things like cake and hot chocolate and all those kind of fun, free things that, that a family can come down and engage in, in just a great time in that space, and all for free. So yeah, that's, that's what the festival area is, is looking like. We're really excited to the Town of Drayton Valley Municipal Library and potentially just kind of waiting to hear from the fire department and Public Works. We're hoping to have some of their equipment and their personnel on to do a little bit of a PR opportunity with the public and talk about their equipment and just kind of best practices for when we're in a big snow removal situation, what helps them to get the snow removed the quickest, and for the fire department to just allowing people to see their equipment, have a chat with personnel, that's always a good idea. Next slide. We've also invited the Sculptors Association of Alberta to participate again this year. As you'll recall, last year in Discovery Park, we had three ice sculptures done, and I tell you, people go and could, we could make for a community by So as, as you see, I've got a schedule of events on this board here, and I've got a number of copies that I will leave with council, so you guys can all see the schedule of events for the day. I think it's fairly well loaded, and there should be lots for people to do, so we're very excited about what's coming up. This year, also, I pursued more heavily corporate and community sponsorship for the event, looking to get donors so that we could make the event even more special and come to life. So we're running a budget of about seventeen thousand dollars right now for the event, and I have around five thousand dollars from community sponsorship at this point. Town of Drayton Valley has contributed sixty-six hundred to the event, and then that's, that's what I'm anticipating unless I get some last minute events. Eagle Point Blue Rapids will pick up the balance on that, as we, we believe that for no other reason, this is, this is an event that gives us great profile in the community and, and is a positive, has a positive impact on the community, so we're behind it. The, some of the challenges that we're looking at particularly for this year, and I don't know if it's just, the, the event kind of came together a little bit later than I had anticipated. Planning should usually start for the event in late September, early October. I really didn't, you just didn't, it's planning anything, as you all know, in this situation that we've been in has been very difficult. So we're, we were a little bit late to the table on getting our plans in place, so subsequently, I'm, I'm, seem to be lacking volunteers this year, so I'm appealing to anyone that has a couple hours to spare. We, we'd like to offer people a two-hour shift, so that you're not there the whole day, you can still enjoy some of the festivities, but if you can, you know, spare a couple hours, I certainly have some jobs that I could utilize people for. I certainly have some jobs that I could utilize people for. The weather is a bit of a concern this year, and in a good way. And you know what? I'm just going with it. If there's no ice at this year's Fire and Ice, that's okay. I mean, we'll make it work. We've dealt with minus 24 weather conditions, and that's brutal. So I'd much rather be on the flip side of zero than super cold, so we'll. Place into your budgets, and then I can count on that year over year, and we can start the planning process, I guess, a little bit earlier. And it's just, you all know, it's just easier when you have a sustainable funding model. So if it's something that council is keen to keep proceeding with, I would ask for them to take that consideration. And then finally, I just want to say, you know, I think, don't ever underestimate the value of fun. We have faced such a hard past two years. Events like these bring community together, and fun is healing. There's just, that's totally my philosophy on the benefits of fun, and it makes me want to host this event every year because it does bring value. Even in the years when we're not in the pandemic situation, February is a tough month. It's cold, it's been a long, dark winter, and that spark of joy and community goes a long, long way. And as Erin said, this is a great community to live, and it's events and community that make things awesome and make people want to live here. So with that, I'd ask if you have any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Your team always does a fantastic job putting on these events. I know I've had the opportunity to attend, and yeah, they're always fabulous. So thank you for everything that you do, for sure. I will open it up for questions from council. Counselor Evans.
Just a comment that I think is very worthwhile, and I think you're probably going to get a lot of people this year, especially with things opening up. It's kind of a person that seems to get out there and enjoy themselves. I know I have been talking to Doug about the library serving some hot chocolate. I just need to, Rob, is there any issue with us opening up the vestibule there and making those bathrooms available on this day? And I guess I'd also ask, are you bringing in porta potty stuff like that to manage the rest of that?
I'd like to talk to the administrative team to make sure there's no concerns with that, but at first glance, I don't see any reason we couldn't do that.
We are bringing in heated washrooms. Alltrays Rentals is helping us to supply those. So we'll have, essentially, there will be five toilets in the units, three male, two female washrooms. That's, and as you would guess, I've submitted the entire plan to AHS. So they'll get back to me if that's not sufficient. But for right now, we're going with it, as that's good.
Perfect. Counselor Ballas, did you have a question? You don't have an everyone?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to make a comment as well. You know, last couple of times, my kids were there and they really enjoyed the event. So thank you very much for it being on you.
Awesome. Thank you. I would just ask you, and anybody who's online, or for all of you two here, if you're coming down to the event area, if you'd like to bring a lawn chair, I encourage that, or even a mug for like, something like hot chocolate or water. It just helps with us not having so much waste. We're very conscientious of how much waste events like these produce. So if we can encourage people to do that, that's a big help.
Perfect. Bring your own lawn chair, bring your own cup. And then a question on the volunteers.
Yes.
You said that about two-hour shifts. Have you reached out to Holy Trinity? I know that they have some, oh, you did.
Yes, I have. Yes. So I'm waiting to hear back from Holy Trinity. And yes, and a couple other groups that we've tried to entice with a little bit of an honorarium to participate as well. So I'm anticipating that things will come together next week. People are, you know, they've got plans and they've got things going on in their lives, but usually it comes together in that last week, but it's the week before that you're going, oh, man. But it'll come together.
Yeah. I'll reach out to you today after the meeting, because I know a couple volunteers for sure.
Awesome.
Yeah. Bend my husband's arm as well, so maybe a handful of us.
Yes.
Good, good. That's fantastic.
The other thing I would just share, too, if anybody's online and in the room here today, too, is if you would like to make a corporate sponsorship contribution to the event, we still can accept that and acknowledge it at the event, not too late. So by the end of the week, if anybody is interested in making a corporate contribution, we would happily accept it to help fund the event.
Well, thank you very much for that. We're very excited for the event, and thank you again for everything that you do. They're always fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Well, good morning. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Hi.
Just hand it straight over to you.
All right. So we're here to talk about summer street parties. So if you just go to the next slide. So just kind of a recap for anybody who wasn't able to attend last year. So in August, we had our first-ever street party. It was a community dinner slash street party, so we still fed everybody, as usual. We had estimated about 2,500 people on the street that night. As you can see, sometimes it was more than others. We had planned to feed about 900. So what we did is we took our regular street parties or our regular community dinners, usually fed about 300 people, that's what we saw, and we tripled that amount. So we planned for 900. In the end, Sam from the White Bull helped us out, and we ended up feeding 1,100 people that night. We saw businesses on the street stayed open late, and they saw a huge uptake in their revenue. They said they did more that night than they did that whole week. We had local street vendors all on the side, and they saw a huge boost as well. They said it was one of the best selling days for them that they've had for a long time. And then the restaurants all around town did really well, too. So once we sold out of food, people went there and they ate, and then they came back and they enjoyed music. So it was a great night for the economy of Drayton Valley, and it was a great night just for people to get out, see people they haven't seen in years, talk with one another, just be part of the community again. So that was 2021. So next slide, please. So this year for 2022, we plan on doing two street parties, hopefully. So what we found, we had a lot of positive feedback from last year. We had tons of people asking if we could do them like every Friday night, we could do them monthly. Obviously, that's just not doable. Summer's busy enough, and because it was so large and it was great, it was more work than we had anticipated. So for this year, we're thinking June 24th is for the first one. That's the last day of school for K to six, so it'd be kind of like a summer kickoff party, sending people off for. We are kind of doing like a taste of Drayton Valley-ish. So we're going to have eight restaurants, each having a signature dish. When we talk to the restaurants, they. And then it gets eight restaurants involved in it. We've already talked to five restaurants, and they were all on board and excited to do it. Once again, we'll have beer gardens, a live band, local vendors, and this time, we're going to have more kids' activities as well. Also, for the food, if somebody decides they want to eat more, they can purchase more tickets and go to different restaurants all throughout. So the restaurants would just make said amount, and then if they run out, they run out, but there will be other options available. And then for the August 19th street party, it'd be similar to last year, except we would like to have food vendors on either side. So Sam from the White Bull said he would do it again. We were thinking about maybe talking to OCT, and so he'd be at one end, they'd be at the other, so there'd be two lines of food, so you wouldn't have to wait as long, and hopefully people would get fed a little bit faster. And then same things, beer gardens, live band, local vendors, and different kid activities from the one before. Next slide. So this is just a cost of our 2021 expenses, just to kind of give you an idea of what we are looking at. So we're kind of predicting everything to remain the same, except food will obviously go up, and we still have the lights from last year, so those will be the same. But yeah, the insurance, to make sure that we're properly insured if anybody gets hurt or anything occurs, is quite high for just a one-time event. Then you have stage, advertising, band, all of that kind of stuff adds up faster than you would think. Next slide, please. So this year, $5 a person from the restaurants, we're thinking about 1,500 people we're hoping to feed, so that's $7,500 in food. And then so all other costs remain the same, minus the lights we already have. That's about $18,626 is our projected cost. Next slide. And then so the ask. So what we're asking from you guys is 5,000 per street party, and then some in-kind support.
Currently, we don't have a SPO, so we are in the process of hiring, so perhaps for the summer or one of the events.
Okay, yeah. So I was kind of manning the beer garden door last year, and that doesn't go great. I'm five-four, so not many people are going to listen to me.
A face of intimidation.
So, yeah, I would like some county peace officers just to help us out. I just want to make sure nobody's taking their drinks outside, or obviously drinking or driving, or because there is booze on site, make sure nobody's getting out of hand, because I would really like to not deal with that. So just some help that way would be great. And then heating the lights on the street again, like last year, would be the in-kind support we would be looking for. Next slide, please. And that's it. Any questions?
Well, perfect. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, last one was such a success. I know that people are still talking about it, like still buzzing in the community. It's a great idea and concept, and glad to see that you're planning for two more this year. That's fantastic. Very exciting. Are there any questions? Counselor Evans?
Just wondering, and again, I thought it was a pretty success last year, too. I took it in and enjoyed myself tremendously, asked everybody, so good work. I just wondered, the cost breakdown, you have 3,000 for alcohol.
Yeah.
Now, that alcohol that you're then reselling?
Yeah, so.
So it's an initial cost, but you'll make that up then, I'm assuming, a little bit.
Yeah, that's the hope. Obviously, if anything is like opened and then not used, we can't take it back.
Right.
And that's an extra cost. But yeah, we are hoping so. All our community dinners, any money we do happen to make from donations, or like these ones are the first ones we've ever done booze on, it does just go back into the community foundation. So it's a kind of like a little fundraiser for us, too, to raise money for the charity.
Fair enough. Thank you. That was my only question.
It was a fantastic question. Any other questions? No, I think, well, that was pretty easy. I think everybody's very excited and very pumped, and there isn't a lot of questions. It seemed to go off, well, I guess from our eyes, it seemed to go off without too many problems. I know there was a little bit of a lighting issue and closure and things like that, but we'll.
We navigated it.
Those things, and we'll adjust accordingly and move forward. So, yeah, no, just very excited and anyway, that, yeah, we can, you know, help spread the word. We'll make sure that we're out and sharing this amazing two events with the community again, for sure. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Just one question. Do you plan on having this as an annual event for both?
Yeah, I think it's like a year-round kind of situation. You know, you were so overwhelmed by the response last year. We, and just with councillors from both councils, not just you guys, but the county as well, approaching us and saying, this is amazing. You know, we love to see everyone from, regardless of what community you're a part of, come together and celebrate. And that's why we decided to go to two this year. And, yeah, I can't see why we wouldn't continue on year over year, you know, supplying this type of event to the community, just because it is, it was incredible. Like, it was a lot bigger than any of us ever anticipated it to be, you know. So, yeah, due to the overwhelming response, I think that it would be something we'd want to continue.
As long as they're remaining successful still and people are attending. But the one nice thing about, that I really liked about last year is just walking the street. You could hear people talking to each other, and they're like, oh, my gosh, I haven't seen you for so long. How have you been reconnecting with people? Like, that was very heartwarming. And then to see people two-stepping in the street, like, that was just, that was nice. Yeah.
Just one other follow-up. In the event adverse weather conditions, is there a plan B?
I don't know what a guy can do about that. You know, you can plan everything, but as you just heard from Sandra in the Fire and Ice, like, who expected it to be plus 10 for the week leading up to the event, right? It's, you can plan for everything but the weather. So we don't have a contingency at this point. We haven't discussed it. But, yeah, maybe a potential, you know, one we backed or fronted or something like that wouldn't be a terrible idea to discuss, for sure. But you know what's interesting about like weather, even last year, I don't know if you guys remember, but when we were setting up last year, the whole day was gross. Like, it wasn't a great day. It was overcast all day and stuff like that. And at 6:00, the skies opened up, and it turned out to be just one of the most beautiful nights of the entire year. So, you know, it's kind of got to take those things as they come, like, there's not a lot you can do about it.
We do have a large tent that we even looked at putting up for food last year, but the worry with that is because we're on cement, you can't pound it down, and then blowing. So, yeah, like, there is things we've thought of, but it would be like no wind. I mean, a slight rain, I think we could get by with, for a little bit, but yeah. If anybody has any ideas, let us know.
Do you handle the weather? We'll take care of the rest.
We'll do some brainstorming. We have a couple months, right?
Yeah, exactly. The other thing to note as well, it wasn't part of the, but the ask monetarily is going to be the same to the county as well. We have a meeting next week or something like that.
Two weeks.
A few weeks from now, and we're on the agenda to kind of present to them as well, and hopefully get the support from them, since this is, you know, something that benefits every resident from both jurisdictions. Yeah, Ryan actually sits on our board as well, and so, yeah, he's definitely aware of the event.
Yeah.
So that would have been one of my questions. So what other groups or organizations are involved in kind of helping kick these off as well?
Yeah, so we, like I said before, the local vendors, we do try and attract as many of those as we can. I think last year, we didn't charge anything to be down on the street. This year, we're trying to find a way not to charge anybody any money, but to make sure if they say they're going to come, they're going to come, just because we had it all laid out. And then because they didn't have to pay a deposit, there was some vendors that didn't show up. And because this one's going to be bigger, especially the first one with all the restaurants, we're really going to have to plan it out a little bit better. So all of those people will be involved. I'm sure DVHTA will be involved as well. We are going to look out for some more volunteers this year, because it was mostly just DVCF that volunteered last year. Um, because it was mostly just DVCF that volunteered last year for food and then the sponsor we had. Um, so we have reached out to a corporate sponsor as well that we're waiting to hear on, that can hopefully sponsor a little bit of money and uh, have some volunteers. So we will, once we get the yes that we can close the street and this is a go, then we will reach out to more people to see what we can do. And then maybe more ideas for the kids activities too, that people could help us with.
Thank you. Um, la- last year, you know, we had the, the band playing and the beer garden area. Will there be kind of an area just for dancing and all that and enjoying this year?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting thing with that street. Like obviously that's the street that we want to do it on. It's downtown core, it's got that charm to it and then the, you know, shops down your side and stuff like that. But there is a little bit of a logistical problem with it, just because like you put 2,500 people on that street and it, it gets full pretty fast. So we are talking about playing around with our design a little bit and seeing what we can do. Um, which might include with our application, when we actually officially apply to you guys to shut down the street, um, reaching out into 52nd Ave or 50, or 52nd, yeah, Ave or 51st Ave to kind of make it more of like a, a T or an I or something like that, just for that, for that purpose. Just so we can have a little bit more space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would also like to put some speakers on some of the roofs of the building going down the street. So when you are at the vendors, you can still hear the band. Because I know that was a comment from last year as well, is that you can hear them further down the street. So if we do extend it, I would like to still be able to hear the band. And not for it to be loud, but still so you get that same.
I was thinking for announcements and stuff as well, right?
Wonderful. Well, thank you again for that. I'm looking very forward to it and I, it's really exciting. And as I said, it's, it's very important in creating fun, right? Not celebrating. I think it was perfect timing after letting you know the.
Yeah.
And. To 7.4 to me. My great job. And but we're actually going to disclose, so there's. So Amanda. That is under section 16, one, uh, someone bigger. That is. Are you looking at it or wondering why it's closed, maybe?
Nope, nope. I uh, I remember making that change.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I just wanted you to be able to empty the chambers?
Uh, um, no, I would think that people present is fine. Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as it's not broadcasted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as the mics are off and cameras and everything.
I just.
Yeah, we sent one. We sent it. I don't, I think it's on. It was a PowerPoint. Is that one of them? It's, huh? The video? Yeah, yeah. Is it?
Maybe we, yeah, if you can queue that up, we can hear you talk a little bit before. Um, yeah, so anyway, so what this is about is it's, it's just kind of like a catch-up on our SOS media campaign that you guys have partnered with us.
So the, you're also gonna have a, I guess.
Thank you. Very interesting, very well done. Thank you. Question, is there gonna be a contact person?
Yeah, yeah, basically, so definitely, we're gonna have contact.
So if it came, say, perhaps, economic development, and somebody wanted to make an inquiry about maybe what type of business or manufacturing, or what's the opportunities in Drayton Valley?
Yeah.
How would that be linked? Would it be linked to our?
We would forward it to you guys, yeah, like, they'll be able to access the town website. If there's, like, if they search economic development, the town would come up, and they would then go through your website.
Yeah, and if you got any sort of inquiry.
Heading back to order at 10:29 a.m. So we just had the pleasure of having four delegations, and now I'd like to ask a counselor to make a motion to accept the reports of the delegation. This is something new, so don't mind me if I kind of fumble through this. So this is something that we're doing for the first time today. So if I could ask a counselor to make a motion. Counselor Clark, the motion's just up there on the screen. Thank you very much for that. I'll call. All in favor, that is carried. And then now with this as well, 8.0 business arising from delegations and administrative updates. In the past, we've had delegations and administrative updates come to council, and then we don't really have discussions. Sometimes we move into GMP and have discussions. So I will ask if there are any discussions in regards to any of the delegations that were presented to us this morning. And then with that, keep in mind, like, when I'm looking right now, the RCMP stats were presented. I don't know if there's any follow-up or anything that we, you know, may direct administration or need anything additional. Family Day, Sandra, there was a couple asks there. So do we want to have a discussion here? Do we want to have it in council? And then also, she had asked us some questions too, in regards to a couple requests that she had. So how do you kind of wanna see that? Are you looking for a request, or?
It's not really, I guess in these instances, the, the bio was originally put in to try and make a common or uniform signage for the area, but in this instance, there's such a variety of signs out there and sizes. Um, it really probably fits in better at this size than maybe if they were all uniform. So it doesn't affect any neighbors. It's on its own property. It's setback from the property limits.
Yeah, I guess from just a comment, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't, uh, you know, obstruct traffic. It doesn't, no, doesn't stand out like a sore thumb or anything. And I think it's set back enough that you can see the rest of the signs on the strip. So I don't know. I mean, it's, it's big, but it's already up too.
It is their standard size sign in other communities as well. I talked to, to them. So it's not a, an unusually large sign.
Yeah. And that would be my question too. I noticed that the sign is already up.
Yes. That's the, the, there were the, the, the positive thinking, I guess.
The optimistic assumption. Yes, yes. Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Wonderful. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Councilor Evans?
You two here. I'll make the motion that council approved development permit DV twenty one dash zero six six with the recommended conditions.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? None. So the motion is that council approved development permit DV twenty one dash zero six six with the recommended conditions. I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to nine point two. This is Thompson, reserve transfers.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
It is that time of the year, passing the final operating budget. But before we pass the operating budget, we just need to approve the reserve transfers that are a part of the operating budget as it sits. So I'll just go through those and get those approved first. Administration is requesting a transfer from reserves for the town of Drayton Valley's reserve account policy TF oh one ninety seven. All increases slash reductions or changes in reserves shall be authorized by a resolution of council, either through the approved budget document or individual resolution as required throughout the year. There were multiple operating projects budgeted in twenty twenty one and taxed accordingly that weren't completed. Administration is requesting to transfer these amounts to twenty twenty two, so the projects can be completed within the twenty twenty two calendar budget year with no additional impact to taxation. Uh, the first one is for education. One of the zero fee classes, uh, healthcare aid was delayed from the end of twenty twenty one to the beginning of twenty twenty two. As such, these classes were not paid for within the twenty twenty one year. The classes are going to be starting, I believe, this month. The total requested transfer is ninety six thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars. Energy efficiency, the team working on energy efficiencies within the organization was planning on paying for an energy audit for several facilities. This was not completed in twenty twenty one, but the team hopes to release an RFP and select an implementation partner in early twenty twenty two, pending council approval. Total transfer request in a hundred thousand dollars. Festival lights, the visual presentation of our town is important to our council. One area that administration was working on was the banners for the Christmas season. Although with budgeted for in twenty twenty one, the project was not completed. Administration wants to finish this by early winter twenty twenty two. Total reserve, uh, transfer requested is fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our C P furniture during the twenty twenty one budget deliberation, Staff Sergeant Matthews came to council to request a contribution towards their bullpen furniture upgrades to make their space usable. Council approved the request, but due to ordering issues, uh, the purchase was neither, neither processed within the, uh, approved within the R C P's budget year nor approved, uh, it to be completed in the next budget year. Administration is anticipating this request to come forward again this year and as such request that this transfer is done. Total transfer is sixteen thousand dollars. And, uh, final request is for the C E T C projectors. In twenty twenty one, the education consortium coordinator requested that forty thousand dollars be transferred from the zero fee budget to supplies out for the purchase and installation of four projectors in classrooms. However, I T, our I T department wanted to order one and test it out before committing to the specific projector. Due to the timing and supply chain issues, the rest have not yet been purchased. Total transfer requested thirty thousand dollars. Uh, if, um, these are all briefly, I guess, all discussed in, during the budgeting process. So again, uh, all of these were budgeted for in twenty twenty one, but not completed. Um, so what happens is that the money that what, why is from reserves is that the money flows back into reserves. And so we just need to request it to be transferred into twenty twenty two operating budget. So if, uh, could be made, um, that'd be awesome.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Um, are there any questions for administration?
Um.
Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Uh, regarding the, uh, energy efficiency, um, if you could remind me, was that a grant that we received or, and then we are transferring that funds over?
No, it was not a grant. It was a, a council committed to a, a certain amount of energy efficiency budget, uh, like a three-year plan last year, and it was in, within that, um, committed amount that council had budgeted for energy that just wasn't able to be completed. So it is funds that, uh, um, from our operating budget. Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions? Is there a council that would like to make a motion? Oh, sorry. Did you have another question, Councilor Evans? Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I, I am being able to flip back in my emails there, but we just had, had a, uh, an announcement for, for a grant that we got having to do with, with energy efficiency. That, that's different from what we're trying to, to do with this money. Just wanted a little clarification there.
My understanding is that the
That was the twenty five thousand approval for the municipal or the green municipal fund? Is that the one that you're speaking?
This is the funding of both. Those are actually that's a piece of work. This is the analysis.
Perfect. Thank you. Did you have another question?
No, I'll, I'll just make a motion.
Make the motion. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I make a motion that council approves the transfer of two hundred and ninety two thousand five hundred and eighty three from operating result to be allocated to twenty twenty two operation as follows. Education, nine six thousand five eighty three, energy efficiency, hundred thousand, festive lights, fifty thousand, R C M P furniture, sixteen thousand, and C T C projectors, thirty thousand. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any comments, questions, debate on the motion? None. There is a motion on the table. All in favor. That is carried. Moving on to nine point three, twenty twenty two final operating budget early. Oh, yeah. Is that right? Early childhood development center. I was thinking that, um, Bernice, and then I seen your name.
Thank you. So we, uh, separate out the early childhood development center. Um, so at this point, if
I would like to declare peculiary interest on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Gomana has removed himself for pecuniary interest.
Pursuant to the municipal government act, council must adopt an operating budget for each calendar year. Accordingly, the proposed twenty twenty two final early childhood development center operating budget is presented for council's consideration. Council discussed the impact of the new federal provincial childcare program on the town of Drayton Valley as a whole and on the, uh, early childhood development center, along with the parents using the center. As presented by administration, the new, the new program does not alleviate any financial burden on the town, but it significantly reduces the fees that parents are required to pay. Council recognized the positive impact that the center has on our town and how important early childhood development is, and as such is willing to absorb a small deficit to keep this the center serving the residents of Drayton Valley. Administration proposes that council adopts the twenty twenty two operating budget for the early childhood development center as presented.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any questions for administration? Councilor Ballas?
Thank you. Debt repayment sixty five seven eighty one. Can you tell me what that's for?
Uh, that's for the center, the, the loan on the building.
There's a adventure?
Adventure, yes. Yes.
So can I just follow up please? So we're looking at a deficit of one thirty nine, one seventy three?
That's the amount required by taxation. Yes. Combined with the deficit and the debt repayment.
And that's
That's how much we need.
Okay. But that don't include what the arbitration ruling would
It doesn't include it. Yeah.
Okay.
So on, right after the R F D is an attachment and you can see, um, under an inter municipal transfer, we have that, um, estimated amount that we're expecting from the county for the twenty twenty two operating year.
And the adventure is taken out of that.
So they don't, we own that asset, so the debt repayment is our responsibility alone.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a council member that would like to make a motion? It's a long one. Councilor Clark, you can get the next one.
It's on, okay, that council approved the twenty twenty two final operating budget for early childhood development center as presented for the town of Drayton Valley with the below, operating revenues, one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and forty seven, operating expenditures of one million, two hundred and eighty five thousand, thirty nine, the net deficit of seventy three thousand, three hundred and ninety two, debt repayment of sixty five thousand, seven hundred and eighty one, and amount required by taxation of a hundred and thirty nine thousand, one hundred and seventy three.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any questions, comment or debate on the motion? Motion on the table. I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to nine point four, final operating budget excluding early childhood development center. Councilor Gomana is coming back.
Thank you. So, um, again, pursuant to the municipal government act, council must adopt an operating budget for each calendar year. Accordingly, proposed twenty twenty two final operating budget, excluding the E C D C, is presented for council's consideration. The interim operating budget passed on December twenty first, twenty twenty one will cease to have any effect as soon as this final operating budget is adopted per M G H section two forty two, three. Administration presents the attached twenty twenty two final operating budget for council's consideration and adoption. The budget presented for approval was deliberated by council on January seventeenth and again on January twenty sixth. After extensive discussions regarding any one-time projects and any, any items outside of normal operation, council decided about two and a half percent increase, uh, that will offer an acceptable operating surplus, uh, which would serve to make the town's debt payments and reserve transfers. Council's priorities include maintaining excellent service levels, having a functioning asset management plan and program in place for future decision-making as well as fiscal responsibility. As such, the twenty twenty two operating budget was created to accommodate these priorities. Administration proposes that council adopts the twenty twenty two operating budget, excluding the E C D C as presented. Uh, just one final note that I wanted to point out that the only change from, uh, the deliberation on, uh, January twenty sixth was that I reduced the contingency by, uh, point five of a, um, tax increase impact and reduce that accordingly, and then did a capital reserve transfer of that amount, um, which totals fifty thousand, fifty five thousand and eighteen dollars. So, um, I reduced the contingency by that amount and are transferring that to our, um, a capital. Other than, uh, that, um, item, everything else is exactly as presented on January twenty sixth.
You said transferring to the capital plan?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. Thank, Councilor Ballas, go ahead.
Yeah. So where does it show that that contingency will be transferred?
So if you well, we just show a reduction in the contingency. So if you look on page, what's
Page fifty eight.
At fifty six?
Fifty six.
Well, fifty six, I just haven't outlined what the transferred capital reserve is. And then on page fifty eight is the reserve and you can see it's reduced.
Yes, it's reduced, but it's still there as a contingency fund, so that, that can be used by the C A O.
The four hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollars that remains is, um, it can only be triggered essentially by the C A O, but also it serves as a, an, an excess collection expense for unexpected uncollectible amounts that, uh, we have to write off. Um, not every year that we have extensive write-offs, but there are years when we have write-offs and that makes sure that, that's where those items go to make sure that we're not, um, way over budget because of a write-off.
I, I thought in our last budget deliberations that we said we were going to transfer that to reserve.
Where a portion of that is getting transferred to reserve, yes.
A portion, but not all of it.
No, we can't, there's, we can't re-transfer all of it necessarily. We have to have some sort of contingency. So where our plan was to, for the next few years, reduce it by point five percent each year to transfer to the reserve and then until we get to an amount that we feel is, um, based on trends that we need in the contingency.
Okay. I just don't recall that being discussed, but
So, uh, during the deliberations, this, uh, particular because it is something to the account, because that therefore it was seen as a contingency fund for the C A O. When you're in a conflict group after we uh, you were unable to how to move proceedings to um, for around taxation living around, when we, when we determine that it's happening for that, we have to spend and so although we do believe that, uh, Drayton Valley would probably ensure that we're talking about there. Uh, so for intention of the linked that might give up the fact on transition and over the next few years
Councilor Ballas, do you have any questions?
Yes, just a follow-up please. I agree that there should be a contingency fund. I don't agree with that amount. Uh, secondly, when you're looking at write-offs, then you're saying that it'll be at the sole discretion of the C A O, uh, without council knowing?
So, uh, in, in fact, the decision, um, to declare something uncollectible is, is typically prompted by the auditor. Um, and so it's not the, the control on the account is that nothing can go in there until the C A O has said yes, but the actual, um, the recommendation to consider something uncollectible comes from your auditor. Absolutely. Those conversations would come to council, specifically in the past, when we've had large write-offs, my expectation would be that it would come to council and I would say, look, uh, because of X, Y, Z, these companies are not able, um, to be collected from. And we're in a position where we're looking to, to write off these values. It'll be in the note, but ultimately the decision is a, is an accounting, um, calculation to say, um, the confidence in our ability to collect these is no longer there. The company's on bankrupt, um, all those types of situations. But there, and I, I can't stress enough that, uh, although the name of this account is, is contingency, it is, it is not for general contingency. Something to come up, I need to spend fifty separately, but it is it is contingency for
Any other questions? Is there a council that would like to make a motion? Councilor Sherif? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I noticed there's no, nothing for M S I. It's that
Um, for our M S I, what we're expecting to receive. Now, that's a capital and revenue, so you won't see that on the operating. We have a small operating grant we get every year, um, of like sixty six thousand, but the big amount of M S I that we are seeing is for capital and it flows through our capital, uh, revenues to our capital.
Good. Councilor Sherif, you want to continue with the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the council approved the twenty twenty two final operating budget excluding early childhood development center as presented for the town of Drayton Valley with the below. Operating revenues of thirty million, six hundred and ninety five thousand, five hundred and ninety eight, taxes fifty million, twenty four eight ninety four, school and senior acquisitions, get a four million, twenty one, two oh eight, transferred from the reserve, two hundred and ninety two thousand, five hundred and eighty three, total revenue of twenty four million, nine hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty six. Operating expenditures of twenty nine million, five hundred and sixty, four hundred and ninety two, depreciation of six million, three hundred and eighty three, seven eighty five, debt repayment of one million, four seventy eight, six seventy five, transfer to reserve of three hundred and thirty six thousand, four hundred and eighty four, total expenditures of twenty four million, nine hundred and ninety one, eight sixty six. Other, other taxation needs for C, uh, for E C D C of one hundred and thirty nine thousand, one seventy three, total transfer to reserve, one hundred and ninety seven thousand, three hundred and eleven. Um, other E C D C debt payment, sixty five thousand, seven eighty one, total debt payment, one million, five hundred and forty four thousand, four hundred and fifty six.
Thank you very much for that. That's very long. Uh, are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? Councilor Ballas?
Hi, uh, thank you. Based on two and a half percent. Thank you.
That's correct. Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, about the, uh, reserve transfers. Um, so mentioned that three hundred and thirty six, four eighty four, and then we are taking out one thirty nine. In the end, we are transferring only one twenty, one ninety seven, three one one. Is that?
Uh, sorry, can you just repeat the question?
No, uh, transfer to reserves on the top, it says three hundred and thirty six, right?
Yeah. So the reason, so, um, if this were, if I had these E C D C and the, like, if everything was combined, then we would only have that top part, operating revenues and operating expenses, and those two would balance, right, to balance the budget? However, because E C D C's out, uh, I just listed them below so that you guys can still see the totals. So three hundred and thirty nine, or three hundred and thirty, um, six thousand. And when you take out the
One thirty nine.
Other needs, then it's only one ninety seven.
So that's, that's the, uh, transfer.
Total reserve transfers, one ninety seven, three eleven. That's correct. Yes, for this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So this is wrapping up our, uh, twenty twenty two operating budget, which will provide for sustainable and efficient operations in town services and also support council's long-term vision for the community. Um, so thank you, administration, too, for, um, presenting and, and going through the budget process and everything with us. I know it's a long process and to council and everybody, so thank you, everybody. Um, and the motion, uh, there was a motion on the, uh, on the table. I will not, uh, repeat the motion, but I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on.
Thank you.
Now, thank you. Moving on to nine point five, federal statutory holiday, national day for truth and reconciliation. Mr. Osman, this is you, I believe. Yeah. That's okay.
The government of Canada proved in twenty twenty on, uh, the building, recognizing September thirtieth. Um, the annual verdict, the provincial government just on legislation for claiming statutory uh, and so, uh, for the patient, uh, uh, of probably proceed with regarding this September thirtieth. Uh, the, um, the agreement, uh, that government that does say that any federal holidays, um, or holiday less of, uh, given, uh, the, the September thirtieth for holiday uh, and so we're looking for a vacation, uh, on their, their town council with uh, for things of September thirtieth as uh, in addition to that, uh, council for uh, for us to partner with presentation by, uh, program information. Uh, it's open bringing us over to early in the years, past time, little building partnership and make up programming. Uh, so what, uh, what I'm looking at is the day of my council approves September thirtieth, if there, uh, uh, they are pretty good. Uh, to recognize my legacy of uh, I further recommend that, uh, possibly establishing the partnership required to comply appropriate program. Uh, we get my engine here with the council not be just
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for administration? Councilor Gomana?
Question. Did, uh, the provincial government, did they announce this as a holiday yet or, uh, start holiday?
Where, sorry?
At the, the points of Alberta?
Uh, no problems with Alberta. Uh, now, last year that they are not considering creating this as a special holiday for venture. These holidays and businesses to decide.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sherif?
Um, so sorry, so September thirtieth is the date picked by, are there municipalities or is it going to strictly for Drayton Valley?
September thirtieth is the day.
Okay.
That day. Class. So the we're moving aside how we'll address it.
Thank you. Councilor Gomana?
Just a, just a comment. I think, um, you know, it's, it's important that we recognize, uh, this day. It's federally recognized, um, as well as, you know, as, as a, um, agri collective agreement, it's recognized for the, uh, unionized staff, right? So I think to, to have that opportunity for, for the rest of the staff is important as well. Um, and to recognize the importance of what had happened and, um, ponder on that, give, give a day, day to work on And to recognize the importance of what had happened and ponder on that, give a day to work on reconciliation and inclusiveness, which we all discussed earlier. So, in my mind, I think I'm in support of having that this year as well as continuing as well.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Just for clarification, because we have the QP, so whether we approve it or not, QP is gonna be recognized as having that day off. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Counselor Clark?
So, is there an ask in here with respect to non-union employees as well, or is this?
And so, for the motion, it says approve this, that September thirtieth. So, are you saying September thirtieth just for 2022 or moving forward?
My, my recommendation would be.
So, so for me, I think it's, it's a tough decision because I don't think that I'm in favor of just recognizing a date for truth and reconciliation. It's important, it's important that we do partner with our First Nations and we educate and understand more. So, I think that with this motion being for ongoing, my only concern was is if we don't do a good job or if we don't build that partnership, as it stated, I know that when you look at our our report here, it says that we'll engage in partnerships with our First Nations to offer information programming events and to help advance truth and reconciliation. So, I think that my only concern is if it didn't happen, or if, you know, we get feedback and there's a different way, because I myself need to educate myself and learn, so I don't want to be insensitive or be not having enough information or education. So, I think for me, it's. I would like to see it as just a 2022 if we are going to do it, and then I would want to all see that, strongly encourage that we're partnering with the First Nations, doing our best, just to kind of a comment more than a, than a question or a suggestion if we could change it. Any other questions, or is there a council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion as. Pressing that here, and then we can discuss about if any changes. The town of, I would like to make a motion that town council approves that September thirtieth be observed annually as a national day for the truth and reconciliation to recognize and commemorate the legacy of residential schools. On this day, council and staff encourage the community to reflect on the horrific residential school experience and engage in conversations to advance truth and reconciliation. Further, that administration to be directed to, in partnership with our First Nations partners, offer informational programming events to help advance truth and reconciliation on this day annually. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? None? Okay, I guess I'll just make a comment again that, that I really am encouraging that we do our best to partnership with our First Nations and seeing what we can do to, to celebrate and educate ourselves. If there is no other, Counselor Ballas, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, thank you. I kind of agree, I agree with your comments, and I think, you know, let's look at doing it this year. I'm not sure about some of the language. I understand it's horrific, but I'm not sure if we needed to have it stated in here as being horrific. I think that's to be determined by the people. I don't think it's our place to state it's horrific. We, I think we know that. But I don't think that we should be telling the people that we're directing them to think that it's horrific. That's their own opinion, in my opinion. So, I would like to see some amendments to the language and for state that is for September thirtieth, 2022, and to be considered again next year.
Okay, so Counselor Ballas is asking for a friendly amendment to Counselor Gomana's potential motion on the table to approve that rather than September thirtieth, that it would be changed as September thirtieth, 2022, so to gather further information and engagement with our First Nations, and also to maybe change some of the language a little bit there as well. Counselor Gomana, do you accept the friendly amendment?
For the, for the wording part, I'm not sure what you're suggesting to, to change. For the other piece, whether it's continuous or just for the year, I think as a council, we can make that motion anytime if we need to change it. We can have it as is now, and then if it's not happening for the vision that council is portraying, we can always bring back another motion to, to change it, right? But I would like to know from Counselor Ballas, what exact wording changes would you like on the motion? Okay, yeah, I'll expect, accept that, that friend, that piece of friendly amendment.
So, you're just accepting part of the friendly amendment?
That's right.
So, then you're not accepting? Mr. Osman?
With regards to the. Emperor. He said. He said, isn't, however. Yeah, so essentially, if you. Have some clear about. Position that is not prepared to make. We should move it forward.
Okay, so where are we?
And if I, I could just add, with regards to the wording, the wording describing the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation is direct from the federal government. Writer.
And well, maybe, but that doesn't mean I have to agree with them either.
I don't think Counselor Ballas is speaking to truth and reconciliation. I think he's speaking to the reflection on the horrific residential. So, I don't know if all of the wording. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I mean, we say the same thing three times in there. You know, starting with on this day, you can literally get rid of that whole sentence, because you say the same thing again in the next sentence. And the previous sentence also says to recognize and commemorate the legacy of residential schools. You're pretty much regurgitating the same thing three times, so if you just strike that middle sentence and leave the rest, I think you're probably in good shape.
So, is that an amendment or a suggestion? Okay, you would like to make an amendment? So, we don't have Counselor Ballas as making an amendment? A friendly amendment? It was just a suggestion? Oh, yeah.
While doing this, just ask. Okay, can I request a friendly amendment to remove the second sentence entirely?
Counselor Gomana, do you accept?
I ask a question back. Counselor Clark, so the first sentence is more about national, you know, what it is, right? The second sentence is that the community would be pondering on that. So, you think both the same? That's why in my mind, it's different. Where in the first sentence it says, thirtieth observed annually as a national day for truth and reconciliation to recognize, commemorate the legacy of presidential schools, right? And that's about what it is. Then the second piece is, on this day, council staff encourages the community to reflect on that. That's, that's different in my mind.
So, basically, I'm viewing that as, so you're recognizing and commemorating, and then you're going to recognize and commemorate through, if we get rid of the second sentence, through administration directing or through administration in partnership with First Nations to offer informational programming, which would recognize to help advance truth and reconciliation. So, that all feeds into that whole recognition side of things. I don't want to get into the weeds here, but I think if you strike that second sentence, the rest of it makes sense, as is.
So, we don't encourage the community to reflect on that?
Yeah, but that will be through administration in partnership. They're going to be offering, and you know, that's, that's encouraging the community, you know, the community to reflect and, and understand what the truth and reconciliation means, right?
So, should we include that on the last sentence, then say, you know, further that administration, we direct to, in partnership with our First Nations partners, offer information programming events to help advance the truth and reconciliation on this day annually in our community as well as in our organization? Sure.
Okay, I'm not quite sure what's happening, but we do have a lot going on, Counselor. So, are you not accepting?
Yeah, I guess that's what I was gonna get into. So, if Counselor Gomana doesn't accept the friendly amendment, his motion would still be on the table.
Yeah.
And if, if our counselors wanted to see it with the second sentence taken out, then we would vote against Counselor Gomana's motion. We can then make a new motion asking that that second sentence be, be removed, correct? Okay.
Okay, are you accepting the friendly amendment?
From Counselor Clark's friendly amendment is just to strike the, the second sentence.
Yeah.
Totally, in totality.
Yeah.
Okay, in my mind, I think it's important that we portray directing home, right, you know, not only the organization, but the community as well to reflect, and I don't think if we remove the, the second sentence, we are not saying that piece. So, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark, I'm gonna.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table from Counselor Gomana. I will ask all in favor. All opposed? And it's defeated. So, then I will ask for a counselor, if there's another council that would like to make a motion. Counselor Clark, would you like to make a motion, or Counsel Ballas? Okay?
So, the town council approves that September thirtieth be observed annually as a national day for truth and reconciliation to recognize and commemorate the legacy of residential schools. Further, that administration be directed to, in partnership with our First Nations partner, offer informational programming events to help advance truth and reconciliation on this day annually.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any comments, questions, debate on the motion? Again, I would just like to stress that we are encouraging, you know, following through, just to make sure that we're partnering with our First Nations, and if there's no other questions, I will ask. Motion is on the table. All in favor. And now it completely went blank. All opposed? That is carried. Moving on to nine point six, internal sustainability committee, committee terms of reference. Okay, perfect. Are there any questions, Counsel Ballas?
Of course. Two things. I understood last time that we discussed that we were going to suggest that the chair would be chosen by the committee. Was that not part of our discussion, if I recall? And the second thing is on the internal community safety committee, where it says stakeholder and communication strategy. You refer to this as the sustainability committee. It's probably just a typo, but. See that on number three and.
So, can you, can you direct me to that sentence again?
On the internal community safety committee, terms of reference? If you look at number three, it's reference to sustainability committee.
I don't know where you were.
That's, that's on the next terms of reference. So, we're just in that.
Yeah, I realize, and I'm just bringing the comment that this is.
So, it's on the internal sustainability committee, number three?
No, on the internal community safety committee.
It's on the next RFP that we have.
No, I'm just bringing it to your attention now, that's all. Yeah. But right down, my concern is the fact that on the organizational side, I think we discussed, and I thought council had agreed that the chairman, chair would be picked by the committees.
Yeah.
So, that is one part of the discussion, how we, right, didn't have a consensus motion of council to make a change. So, if there is an opportunity, if council would like to see that amended, as the table today, it can certainly.
I will make that motion. Is that what you need? For this one, yes.
Okay, can I go to Counsel Gomana first? Counselor Gomana?
Counselor Ballas, I think I agree with you, you know, that need to be changed, but I think it need to be changed for all the committees, not just, just one. So, would you change the motion to include all of them?
I think we'll have to do each one.
Okay, and then we. Because we did change it for the economic development and the education already.
Did we? No, we didn't.
Those, those are all approved, because the chair being appointed as a member of the.
We didn't, we showed up, but we didn't.
So, are we gonna bring them back for that change?
I can bring them back if that's the number.
Okay. We'll, we'll. Counselor Ballas, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the chair will be chosen by the committee as a whole.
Okay, so, no, no, we'll have to make a motion. The motion will be probably. No? If you go down to six, 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 where you can hit me with whatever, whatever. I'd like to just amend it there. Put the page over, right?
So, I.
You don't have it? Oh, you don't have it.
We don't require it.
Oh, I do on the internal.
But do you need approval for the internal? That's what I think we're gonna do is, who wants to make a motion to approve it with the amendment.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment. You don't require a motion to amend it separately from the motion to approve. You could make a motion to approve the terms of reference with the following change.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move that. Town council approved the and which one, on the sustainability committee, right?
Yeah.
Terms of reference with the amendment to how the chair is to be selected that being by a vote from the committee, the committee as a whole. Now, if you can amend that so it makes sense.
I think my recommendation would be that, as the, the motion just reflects that the appointment of the chair will be made by the resolution committee.
Good. Sounds good to me.
Okay, so there are any questions or debate? The motion is that town council approve the internal sustainability committee terms of reference. Included by chair, made by. Resolution committee? I think that's what it was. That's what it was?
With the amendment.
With the amendment, with the amendment, took me appointed by the chair, made by the resolution committee. I will ask all in favor. Oh, moving on to our next, uh, decision item, nine point seven, the world community safety committee for terms of reference, nine point seven.
All right, so, uh, this is our second, uh, internal committee of the day. This is the community safety committee. Uh, it was previously the policing, community, security, fire services committee. Uh, again, uh, my apologies for the typo. Uh, it's under committee membership and composition of term. Uh, and it refers to the environment and action committee, and it should read community safety committee. Uh, otherwise, uh, the terms of reference is as it was presented to council, uh, at GMP.
So, so again, if we want the chair changed. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
If we want the chair changed to being picked by the committee, we have to make this motion as well here.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any questions for administration? Besides the one that Counsel Ballas has just asked? Would you like to make a motion ahead?
Uh, the town, I move that town council approve the internal community safety committee terms of reference with the amendment. How did you put that?
Uh, with the amendment that the chair be appointed by resolution of the committee.
Pointed or selected, whatever. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's a motion on the table. Are there any debate comments or question on the motion? None? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll have five minutes. And then we'll jump back into our department reports and wrap everything up. One more minute. We'll call this meeting to order, uh, at eleven forty-three. And, uh, before we jump into our department reports, I think that, um, we'll ask for a motion. Um, administration has suggested that, uh, rather than bring this back in regards to our internal committees, that, um, uh, we bring this, or that a motion is made, um, to change the structure of, uh, the chair, how the chair is appointed. So, um, with that, I will ask if there is a council that would like to make a motion for all of the internal committee. We'd love to, okay, Counsel Ballas? It, it's up here. Okay.
Uh, I move that town council, I move that town council.
Amen.
And then the terms of reference for the eternal education and economic development committees, that the chair be selected by the committee at their first meeting.
Sure, that's wonderful. Counsel Ballas has made a motion. Are there any comments, question, or debate on the motion? Counsel, Counselor Evans, sure.
I'll just, uh, I'll just say this. The, the, the reason I continue to go into against these motions is, I believe that by doing it this way, it turns into a more of a popularity contest as opposed to, uh, someone within administration whose job it is to, uh, address the issues that come before, uh, these committees. Um, and really, that's, that's my mission there. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Are there any comment, other comments, questions? Or debate on the motion? So the motion is that, uh, Counsel Ballas made the motion, and I will ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Uh, did you get that, Sabina? Okay, thank you. I did too. I thought, I thought that your comments, yeah, definitely changed sides. Okay, moving on to department reports. Um, we'll start with planning and growth. Mr. White, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worshipful council. Uh, I participated in a webinar on January eighteenth with Fezery and Telus, who are the administrators of the province's nine-one-one system. Uh, I guess the best, the key message is that they're going to be shutting down the, the old analog wire-based, uh, system in March of twenty, twenty-five, and replacing it with a new digital internet model. So the message is that municipalities have to, uh, do some, uh, jump some hoops to get connected to that, uh, new system. The, uh, just update on the HW pickup school. Uh, Alberta Infrastructure has selected a building contractor, and they expect, uh, construction to begin this spring. I asked the question when they expected it to be completed. They said that was not public information yet. Uh, but there should be some building in, in, by the fall. Um, and again, as part of that project, the upgrading the retention water basin is part, part of that projects, it will be initiated concurrently with that construction. And finally, uh, spring must be coming. Uh, there's a number of, uh, business license applications, discharge, it's compliance certificates, development, uh, queries. We are, we have received a new retail cannabis app, application by the, in the DQ mall, the strip mall in there. Uh, so we're reviewing that. I'm advising on some new airport regulations with the county. Uh, there's, uh, couple of, uh, development permit applications coming forward in a, a land use bylaw amendment, which is the United Church, coming forward in March second. And, uh, continued work on Deer Meadows ASP. Uh, the developer has accepted the council's cost sharing proposal. So we're on to the next step.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your report. Uh, are there any questions, Counselor Evans? Well, there's a lot of questions. We'll start with Counsel.
Ken, I, I just wanted to clarify for that tie-in for those utilities. Uh, council had, had, had made a motion to, to pay that percentage. But we didn't include the cost of, uh, securing that right-of-way in those costs, correct? So we would also bear the cost of that right-of-way. So purchasing that land to run that line through there. I, and again, it's just, I just want council to be aware of there. There is an additional cost there to, to secure that land under our name. So we can run that line through that piece of, of, uh, private property to bring it down from off the road there. So there, there, there will be an additional cost there. What that will be, do you have any idea, Ken? Have you had any initial discussions with the landowner?
Okay.
Yes.
So what portion of the land?
Well, the, the line was offset into private property, right? So we're reading from that name all the way down and across the road and into, uh, Deer Meadows. So to get from that main line, uh, to our roadway, which is our property, there's a piece of private property in between there. It was, it had a square around it in that, that amount that we saw. So we need to secure that. So we have the ability to, one, put that pipe in there, and two, to, to, uh, uh, provide maintenance, et cetera. Whenever we need to go in and dig it up, we need to know that that land is, is ours, or we have a right-of-way on it. Yeah, yeah. But we need to purchase that from the landowner. The landowner needs to want to work with us to, uh, uh, give us a reasonable price. I'm not sure if we have a policy that states, uh, what we would pay for, for acre or something like that. Or what we could do if the landowner refuses to give us that, that piece of land. And I apologize for not bringing this up when we were debating it for that hour there. Um, but, uh, you know, I kind of thought about it afterwards, and I just wanted to make sure that council is aware, that's another step that needs to happen, that will be our cost in addition to what we took on there.
So that wasn't done at time of subdivision? To the north?
No, there's, uh, they put, uh, through, through your worship, they, they put the right-of-way in for the main trunk line. But there was no, uh, I guess foresight into connecting to the south parcel with a utility right-of-way. That's, I guess, a disadvantage. For whatever advantages we're, we're locating that line there, that's a disadvantage.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm gonna just make our way around. Counsel Ballas, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of questions. Uh, first one, the land you're discussing, is it, uh, developed lot? Is it on developed lot? Is, what's the potential for the land?
Uh, it, it's in various structural plans. It's shown as a residential, more higher density, but, you know, again, it's subject to.
So how much land would we be talking about? Would we? Oh.
Not much, no. I agree, maybe it would be like quarter of an acre. Yeah.
I think it's seventy-five meters. But, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll leave that up to you. The other question, Ken, is that there's been some concern about the number of liquor stores, cannabis stores that are coming into town. And they're saying, oh, is there some restrictions that could be made as to the number? And I'm a believer in free enterprise. But is there any type of restrictions?
Well, we have, we have the two hundred meter setback, uh, between cannabis stores. Uh, something similar could be, uh, implemented with liquor stores as well, two hundred meters between liquor stores. Uh, so there's a, there's a variety of options that, uh, still keep us in the land use realm. Uh, but, you know, if you, if you restrict, I think if you make a, a, a policy, just that's, that's it. No more liquor stores or cannabis stores. That's outside the plan. That's more of a, you know, a business political decision, not really a planning decision.
Counselor White?
Uh, mine wasn't associated with any of those, but, um, the nine-one-one side of things, is there, is there a known cost associated with that twenty-twenty-five date to, no?
Not at this time.
Are we anticipating there will be a cost to the town?
Well, there certainly will be time spent, uh, rejigging our, our system to fit. The data is, there's five, they, they identified five layers of data we have to connect to, so we will have to, uh, jump those hoops in any case. But I don't, yeah, I don't have a cost at this point.
Counselor Sheriffs?
Different chunk. Different chunk. We're talking to.
It's very possible that you're.
Right, but there's two, you know, it's two properties. Separate persons. West side of Beckett, the northern side of Beckett.
You're so.
Where the four is, I know.
Oh, yeah, both have.
To, uh, Counselor Sheriffs, uh, I, I guess to what end would, would owning the, the entire lot, what would we, what would be the advantage there? What would we be using it for? Okay, I was just curious if you had something in mind that, that we could do this or do that with it?
I didn't have my microphone on. Um, no, I don't really have anything in particular in mind, but from personal experience, owning land and knowing that something will be happening, such as lines, water lines, sewer lines, um, I have a feeling that the owner of that property might be asking quite a bit of money. And I know what the property is sitting at, and it's actually not a bad price, that piece of land. Just a suggestion. Yep. Hey, Omid, did you have something to add?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So essentially, the picture that you see up there, I mean, what we would have to right-of-way would be about seventy-five meters by about five-ish meters. That's what we would have to secure as either a right-of-way or to buy outright, like Counselor Evans declares. Um, and he's a hundred percent right. So, uh, definitely would be a negotiation. I don't believe we have a policy on what we would pay per acre, but the whole, uh, parcel that Counselor Sheriff's is referring to is about five point six acres. So.
Sorry, Counsel Damana?
Thank you. Um, sorry. Um, no, my, my question is that, um, you know, having right-of-way versus buying, you know, I don't think we are buying all the properties that our, uh, pipes are going, right? So I think it's more of a negotiation about right-of-way rather than buying, buying, uh, uh, pipeline, you know, pipe where it goes, in my mind, because if not, we are kind of setting up a precedence for the, for the next one.
Okay, maybe some of these conversations we can have in, in GMP as well. I think we're getting a little bit deep in the weeds here. Ken's just giving his presentation and he's getting the, the sort of degree grill over there. Mr. Osman, would you like to wrap this up?
I was gonna make a similar conference, uh, comment that, uh, potentially what we could do is we could have administration have a look at it and bring a report back to council, um, and, and, and consider it deeper at that point in time.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Ken. Uh, we'll move on to infrastructure and engineering. Uh, Mr. Olenek, this is you.
Okay, so for utilities, uh, I have some updates. So some of this is a bit of old news, but the annual reporting to Alberta Environment has now concluded, so we are now done. Uh, for the river study, I did have plans to have the intern come present to council on the end of February. However, there's another phase that we asked her to do, so we're looking at about April sixth is when, hopefully, she's gonna come and present to council. Uh, I've read so far the first two phases of both, uh, reports. They're very informative for the raw water intake issue that we are experiencing. Um, and she's doing a lot of comparatives and, and seeing what other municipalities have faced, what grants are applicable to, what the cost is. So I think that would be, uh, very informative for this municipality and for council itself. Um, and then, of course, utilities has some annual preventative maintenance work to do to the UV building, just to make sure that we're staying within compliance. The streetlight plan, the subsequent, uh, subsequent cost, um, we're gonna have to engage some, uh, electrical contracting services just to kind of see what other options we can do for streetlights and, and that sort of thing, to see what's out there on the market and delivery timelines. Um, I know for myself, I call February tender month, because right now I'm building all of the tenders to be releasing on APC for all of the capital projects that, uh, this council has approved. So I'm very busy with that so far, right now. Um, does council have any questions?
Thank you for that. Any questions, Counsel Evans?
Try not to take up too much time. Uh, just a, uh, comment on your, uh, work in the alleys. Uh, it was, uh, very good, and you guys removed the windrows, which I had suggested you leave. Um, but your call was correct. Uh, removing those windrows was the way to go.
Thank you.
Um, just, uh, a comment on the, uh, map that, that we had on our website, when, I believe it was for the alleys that were gonna be getting done. Uh, I, I just found it a little confusing when we had the, uh, the water lines, uh, on there. I think we could just remove that layer next time. Just, uh, just something small. And I, lastly, I was just wondering if we've ever, uh, done a calculation of. And I, lastly, I was just wondering if we've ever, uh, done a calculation of, uh, how many kilometers, intersections, uh, driveways, or acres of parking lot that we clear with every, uh, snow removal, uh, shot that we do? And whether that might be worthwhile, uh, just getting a rough estimate of. I'm not saying we should get down to the, the final inch. And then I think that would be maybe some good information to throw up, uh, for the residents to understand. We clear this many kilometers, we go by this many driveways, front and back, this many intersections, et cetera, just so people maybe get a, a little better understanding of, of how big a job this is every time we hit it. That's it for me. Thank you.
No, thank you, Counselor Evans. I know, uh, Ms. Ms. Stone and I, we did try that a couple of years ago. We didn't quite get all the way there, but that's something we can, we can work towards, because I agree with you. I think it paints a bigger picture on.
Yeah. And that stuff makes me... Free to cover that.
Mm-hmm. Very, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions? Okay, moving along. Thank you very much, Owen. Moving on to community services and FCSS, ten point.
We want to come in. And so, though it's not on our department report, I'm gonna add to that. Um, typically, in normal years, we host a volunteer appreciation banquet. Um, volunteer appreciation week is coming up April seventeenth. So we, um, made the decision yesterday that we're gonna go ahead and try our best to go forward with that volunteer appreciation banquet down at the Mackenzie Center. Um, and it's certainly needed after, after, uh, sorry, I need to get rid of this, because I can't talk. Um, it's, it's certainly needed after, you know, hearing about all the awesome activities and events that are being hosted by other community groups and all the volunteers that are being involved. We really need to have an event that is gonna show our appreciation to them. So, um, look forward to more information on that. Um, as far as FCSS goes, I'll just go quickly and hit a couple of points. Um, as far as housing goes, we've definitely seen a steady increase in the number of people who are coming in, requiring assistance for finding housing. Um, the primary areas are affordable housing and, um, seniors housing. So I recently spoke with, uh, the Bradshaw Foundation, who are missing that they are actually starting to send seniors our way, because seniors are coming their way and that they don't have, um, any vacancies for them. Um, so we did speak about, um, starting those conversations about creating a, a strategy that would address, um, especially seniors housing, um, going, going forward. So, um, I'll keep you updated on that. Um, Park Valley Pool, Lana just wanted me to mention that she's extremely excited that she's up to full capacity, and she's really busy this week, uh, with the kids out of school. Um, she's flat out with programming all week, so she's really happy and excited about the, the opening this morning. Um, oh, I skipped over Canada Day. We do have, um, an RFP for, uh, proposals for Canada Day this year. The application deadline is February twenty-fifth, so we're looking forward hopefully to getting some, you know, new and exciting ideas for Canada Day that, um, hopefully can be face-to-face now this year. And, um, community services, we did, um, extend the deadline to February eighteenth for, um, RFPs for the management of the urban housing program.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any questions for Laura? Counselor Evans, wonderful.
Thank you. In regards to Canada Day, I thought I read somewhere or seen somewhere that the Great Valley Community Foundation was interested in taking it all?
Um, they, they were interested. They, they, we did have some discussion, but they decided to go ahead with their, um, plan to do.
Sorry, everybody. I'll start again. Uh, good morning, council. I'll be quick. Um, I'll start with Aisha's, uh, big news. She was most excited about the FCM funding that's come through. So, um, further to the discussion we had earlier. So this is for the sensors that are gonna go in at the Omniplex and the Town Office. And, uh, from what she's, uh, the information she's provided to me is that these sensors are gonna read the electricity use and then provide a bunch of data. Um, and then on the other side of that, she said that there's an artificial intelligence-based platform that's gonna process the data for us. And she was very excited, and she wanted me to highlight that the sensors are standard, but the artificial intelligence part is really innovative, and it's, uh, developed by an Alberta company. So that's pretty neat. On the education side, uh, I believe we have finalized the agreement with Olds and Everest. And so we should be able to begin, uh, that recruitment process immediately. And, uh, most excitingly, we have fifteen students starting, uh, next Monday for the healthcare aid program. So that's gonna be awesome for the center. And then lastly, um, following up with, uh, some of the people that attended the, the Business Support Network back in January. And so I'm gonna work with the county and just ensure that this important initiative continues and that the right supports and resources are being, uh, offered to our businesses. So that's what we'll be focusing on for the next few weeks. So if anybody has any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions? No? Wow. Well, thank you very much. And very exciting news. Thank you for sharing that with us.
We good now? Start again. Morning, council. I don't have official, an official report today for council, but if council has any questions, I'm open for any questions.
Good morning. Thank you. Yeah, I know. We just see, we just heard from you, so it's, it's good if you don't have a lot to report. Are there any questions or anything that anybody heard for Tom? Oh, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Just curious about the, uh, um, fire truck that we were going to donate, uh, to, was it Ukraine? Uh, yeah, so just, just a status update on that would be great.
Um, it has been, uh, delivered to the organization that is going to be sending it over. From what, from the last I heard, it has not yet been sent, but, uh, it is, uh, packaged, ready to go. So once that is done and it's operational, I'll, I'll let council know.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, ten point six, corporate services and finance. Ms. Thompson? Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Uh, regarding the audit, uh, Ms. Thompson, so we are using a company. We've been using for them for the last couple of years, right? Do we need to change that, or is it okay to continue with this with the same company?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. No other questions? Thank you, uh, for that. Uh, Mr. Osmond, your CIO of report?
I don't have anything additional for council today, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Oh, wonderful. Any questions? No? Okay, we're gonna move on to council reports. Uh, Counselor Evans, you're up first.
Uh, you know, I don't, um... I've heard Gordon meeting is... Right there. Wasn't quite well, hundreds of... Uh, yeah, kudos to Doug and his team there. They've, they've managed very well. Um, Healthy Communities Coalition, they're still kind of struggling a bit with their insurance and really sort of analyzing what they do and, uh, what insurance is absolutely required and whether we wanna spend all the money that's in account, in their account, uh, on that insurance. That's about it for me.
I, I seen that the insurance was significantly, uh, higher there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Questioning that for sure.
And then I... They need to take a hard look at, at what they're, what they're doing. And, and they're, they, they have so many different things on the go or coming up that, uh, it's, it's, it's a bit of a process to decide, okay, is it critical? Or are only parts of the insurance code, uh, uh, critical moving forward? And what do we have coming up? Do we wait a while before spending that money? So.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Sheriff?
Um, so I joined a few Zoom meetings, and one that stands out was the suicide prevention. Um, it was quite eye-opening to, um, the, the numbers and statistics of what's been happening in Alberta in the last couple of years. But, um, looking forward to, uh, meeting tomorrow with Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism. And I did volunteer myself and husband and two of my sons for the Fire and Ice Festival, so hoping they show up without a hearing, and, uh, looking forward to those. That's about it.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. Uh, W. Mayor McGee is not here. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Um, also attended the, uh, suicide, or the Health Advisory Council event, and, and it was directly in regards to suicide. And it's kind of interesting, the stats. Right now, the mortality rate has jumped dramatically since twenty-twenty. An age group, and whoever's in this age group be concerned, is forty to sixty-four. Uh, and the males are the higher rate. So I've made it through that one, but there's many here. But it, it, it is a serious problem, and, and, uh, there is hopefully some plans in place to address it. And one of those is, given to my next report, is the PAC system. And that is being continued to be considered. There was a meeting held with, and it wasn't the minister, I think it was the deputy minister, or whoever it may have been, but, uh, requesting, uh, some funds to go ahead with the PAC. Right now, we're under the jurisdiction of Rocky Mountain House, which does not assist us in any way. By the time they got here, it would be way too late. So there is a crisis response team, which is CRT team, that is gonna be established within the next couple of months in Drayton Valley. And that crisis response team is for people that walk into the hospital. But if the RCMP pick up a person, they cannot utilize the services of the CRT, which does not make any sense whatsoever. So this has been discussed with the, uh, minister's office, who are supposedly going to be discussing it with AHS, to have that at least hopefully changed, so that until perhaps we get a PAC team, at least the RCMP will have access to the CRT, to the crisis response team. Uh, it seems to me to be a very stupid ruling that the RCMP shouldn't be able to assess. Maybe what they have to do is just bring them to the hospital, drop them off at the door, let them walk in. I, I don't know, but, but because it doesn't make any sense at all. So it ends up they doing, otherwise they probably end up doing a Form 10 and, and transporting them to Pinoka or wherever. So that's being looked at. Uh, I also took part in a, it was a priority-setting session in regards to strategic planning put on by Gordon McIntosh. And I wish all of us had taken that prior. It's such an excellent program, and, uh, if anybody gets an opportunity to look at doing that, I, I would certainly strongly suggest, uh, participating in that, because it's a, it's a very, very good program. As any strategic plan, it's only as good as you use it. If it's gonna sit on the shelf, it's, it's no good. But we're gonna get ours, right?
Um.
And that sort of concludes my part of the report. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Um, Counselor Clark? Oh, sorry, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Um, not a whole lot. Uh, twenty sixteen, you know, we all were in the budget meetings. And, uh, third, we had this alumni check presentation for the zero fee. And I was excited to see, um, having some community fundraising for, uh, the initiative. Other than that, on a lighter note, uh, I had the opportunity to go to Legion for a steak supper. I'll encourage you if you want to go and taste, uh, the steak. They were fantastic, so.
This path back to normal here with the, um, COVID restrictions relaxation. Um, I'm kind of interested to see, I guess, what administration has in terms of plans to help facilitate that, uh, move back to normalcy.
Uh, so the, uh, the information that came out last night was that the immediate decisions won't directly affect our operation. Uh, we did not have, uh, R E P programs implemented on the facilities themselves. However, uh, However, uh the the groups that are using them will be able to resume their normal normal activities. Uh there was some. Foreshadowing um of potentially seeing the um the work from home. Direction from the province being repealed as soon as March first. Uh assuming that that is the case, we will likely then have um most of our staff transition back to to full time in the office. Um and so we'll continue to to stay heads up as the government kind of makes their plans known to everybody and as they pin those down. Um but as it stands right now, I think it it's more foreshadowing than firm decisions. So uh we'll we'll keep an eye on it and see where it goes. Uh but the organization will continue to be mindful um of the the. The critical nature of the services it provides in the community and and will continue to make choices to protect those assets.
Councillor Alice, did you have something to add?
Just back to my report, if you don't mind for a minute, and I should have mentioned this is that there was approximately three hundred people involved from coast to coast. And there was breakout rooms and the interesting part that the number one priority in the majority of them was economic development. I I just wanted to bring that, that that's seems to be an issue throughout when people are doing strategic planning. It's economic development seems to be the biggest issue.
Thank you for that. Um to my report, I don't have a lot um to add besides what everybody else mentioned. Just a big thank you to. The Alumni Committee for um for the fundraiser and thank you to the Rotary Club for allowing me to present to them. And with that, I will move into information items. Twelve point one, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Meeting Minutes, November eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Stats, December twenty twenty one and summary of motions, twenty twenty one. Twelve point two, Brazel Foundation Meeting Minutes, December second, twenty twenty one. Twelve point three, Drayton Valley RCMP Community Letter, Third Quarter Community Policing Report and Stats. Is there a member of council who would like to make a motion to receive this as information? Councillor Gavanna? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. And we will adjourn the meeting at twelve twenty three.